Good evening and welcome to the November 18, 2025 City Council Regular Hybrid Meeting. My name is Saleem Nees. I'm the mayor. And this evening's Hybrid City Council meeting is being brought to you in person and by Zoom. We're also broadcasting live on the city's YouTube channel. Welcome and thanks for joining us tonight. Council members, please have your microphones turned off for roll call. City Clerk Andrea Larson, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Androl. Here. Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds. I heard him say here, even though it didn't come through audibly. Or I saw him say. Councilmember Wyker.
Here.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Here.
And Mayor Nees.
Here. All right. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're in council chambers, please stand and face a flag. If you're on video, please turn it off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. We now move to approval of tonight's agenda. If there's no questions, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Councilmember Androl. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Mayor Nees.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Androl.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
And Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So this gets us to our first item, which is the item of special business. And Chief Lane, if you might come to the podium. Tonight, we want to thank Chief Ben Lane of Eastside Fire and Rescue for his 25 years of service to Mercer Island and the greater Eastside communities. Chief Lane began his career at Eastside Fire and Rescue in 1994 and successfully moved up the ranks until he was appointed chief in 2022. Throughout his career, he's led and participated in programs that supported youth prevention efforts, peer support, health and wellness. As chief, his leadership has extended countywide, including advancing mobile integrated healthcare to better serve vulnerable and high need populations and strengthening readiness and regional coordination for wildland fire challenges. Locally, he served as chief of Mercer Island's Fire Department for two years and assisted with the city with the transition of responsibility to Eastside for fire and emergency services for the island, starting in January of 2024. Chief Lane ensured that there would be no change in service levels and supported Fire Department employees as they became employees of Eastside Fire. Chief, we want to thank you for your excellent leadership, your dedicated public service, and care for our community. And I will open it up to council if anybody on council would like to say a few words of appreciation.
Sure.
Councilmember Weinberg.
So, thank you, Chief Lane, for your years of service. And I'll be very brief. It's been an honor serving alongside you these years.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Androl.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to add my thanks as well. Chief Lane, it's been a pleasure. It's, I think, not insulting, but rather flattering to say it's been so uneventful. And thank you for everything you and your team does to keep the community safe and feeling safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yeah, Chief, even though I wanted to be a firefighter, when I was little, I started working with you, I realized how little I knew about how a fire department's work. So I just want to thank you for your patience and your time talking through some really complex issues with me about how, you know, fire administration works and how, you know, your recommendations on how we should do things differently. And I'll also never forget when we were looking for my son, who decided to play hide and seek at the fire station without telling anyone, which was definitely a highlight of my service here. But, you know, I just think, you know, your attitude is always so great and patient, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. And, you know, I just want to add, I've been on council for almost nine years. And in nine years, you see a lot of things. Maybe the only thing that was more hand-wringing than going through the RFP process with fire was a garbage contract and going from Republic to Recology Services. There's certain things that communities care a lot about, and fire is clearly one of them. And, you know, that process was guided by a lot of folks. But, you know, we had a ton of confidence in you and your team as we, you know, you did interim leadership through that transition. And I just can't thank you enough for everything that you did that grounded us and the community in that decision-making process. And really, ultimately, looking at where we are now, it was the right decision for the community. And we appreciate that. The Eastside Fire and Rescue team is just a phenomenal team to work with. Thank you. Okay. Any other words? No. Well, thank you again for coming tonight. Is it okay if I say a few words? Yes, I'd love to. Even though I'm here at the strict orders of the city manager, which I do appreciate, you know, serving as your fire chief has definitely been an honor and privilege. And the men and women of our organization who provide the service to the community, they provide the best service. And when you surround yourself with great people, great things happen. And in that, there is a bright future ahead to our organization. We have Assistant Chief Will Aho named as the next fire chief. And I'd also like to take the opportunity to bring up our newest deputy chief, Deputy Chief Kara Putnam. Chief Putnam joins us from Central Kitsap. And Eastside Fire and Rescue is, as you know, a large organization. We're split up into four different battalions. And Chief Putnam is responsible for overseeing operations in Battalion Three and Battalion Nine. Battalion Nine is here in Mercer Island. And she's already had the great opportunity to do some direct communication with both Ally and Jesse on some incidents. Chief Putnam is also responsible for special operations EMS and training throughout Eastside Fire and Rescue. And again, this is about the future of leadership of the organization is no doubt in great hands. And the great service that you're accustomed to is no doubt going to continue. And I'd just like to give Chief Putnam no chance and just to say hello.
Hi, thanks, Chief. Like Chief Lane said, I originally worked at Central Kitsap Fire and Rescue. I was there for 17 years. My last few roles were as operations chief, training chief, safety chief. So I feel a great honor to be here and to serve, especially Mercer Island. One of my dreams is to live in the community I serve, and I'm getting awfully close. I live in Southeast Seattle. So when I go for walks along the water, I can look over and see Mercer Island and the people and the community I serve. So that means a lot to me. It's an honor to be here to represent the fire chief and Chief Aho and Chief Garat. And my door is always open. Ally and Jesse have my phone number, so if any questions, just let me know. I'm here to serve you and your citizens as well.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to our city manager report, for which we welcome city manager Jesse Bonn.
All right. Good evening, City Council. Thank you, Casey, for the screen share. Next slide, please. And next one. Just a quick look ahead at how the rest of this year is shaking out. Your next meeting will be Tuesday, December 2nd. Council, I am 90% sure, not 100% yet, that we will not need the second meeting in December. And I will be able to say for certain in just a couple of days. There's one matter outstanding, so I'll be in touch with you by the end of this week regarding that second December meeting. Our boards and commissions continue to meet through the end of the year, and we keep all of our meetings posted on our website at the link below. Next slide. Hey, that's all of you just about an hour ago. I wanted to share with the community that earlier this afternoon, our city council, our staff, and many friends of late councilmember Jake Jacobson gathered at Luther Burbank Park to officially dedicate the pickleball courts. You can see in that photo there, although it was getting a little dark as we were taking pictures, a beautiful sign in honor of Jake. So we are now pleased to call the pickleball courts the Jake Jacobson Pickleball Courts. And we'll be updating all of our maps and website as a result. Thank you, Council, for sponsoring this. It certainly meant a lot to the staff to be there today as well. Switching gears, but talking about playground updates. We are making great progress on the First Hill Playground Replacement Project. There's a picture there to the right. This is a really cool new structure. It's called a tower. It's about 20 feet tall. It's geared for older kids. And that was one of the goals of our playground upgrades over the next 15 to 20 years, is that we meet a variety of needs, including putting in some more challenging pieces for the older kiddos. You'll also see some other improvements if you pop by the park, including cedar timber wall enclosing the play area and new posts for what will be a new swing set. We are anticipating opening by year end. Some of this is weather dependent, famous last words. And I'll remind you that the funds for the playground replacements come from the 2022 Parks Levy. Council, I have seen some questions on social media lately about why it took so long to get started. I'll just remind you that after the levy was approved, we had to start planning for all these replacements, and there was a little bit of a lag. But we're rolling now. And on average, we will be replacing one playground structure a year. Next slide. Okay, this is just an update on a little bit of a headache situation. And I'm pleased to say 81st Avenue Southeast, which is how we travel here to the community center, is back open again. You may recall that a little over a month ago, King County Sewer and their contractor had to close the road again for what was a repair of a re-repair. Very inconvenient. I know, Council, you fielded a lot of complaints about this. The staff did as well. We appreciate everyone's patience while they completed that work. So the road is open now, looks like basically what you see in that picture. They will come back and do a final lift of paving in the spring of 2026. So thank you, everyone, for your patience. If you'd like to read more information about the sewer project, we've got the King County site linked there. Okay, Council, a couple heads-up items. We have our holiday tree lighting Thursday, December 4th at 5:30 PM. I think that's on your calendars, but I'll have Casey double-check. If you came to Town Center tonight, you'll see we have lights up on most of the trees. And I think that work is almost done. Also, community holiday party December 19th here at the Community Event Center. That's also when the Argosy Christmas ship stops by Luther Burbank Park, December 19th. And one more event to shout out. Also in December, December 6th, from 10 to 3 here at the community center, we have our Holiday Makers Market. This is a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and features lots of handcrafted gifts. 75-plus vendors will be here, kids' activities, food, drinks. It's a great time. Entry is free. So if this isn't on your calendar, I will make sure that Casey adds that as well. A couple Youth and Family Services shout-outs. First of all, in October, Thrift Shop staff coordinated with Covenant Living at the Shores. And we went over with our van to pick up things that they wanted to donate that were maybe too large for them to get them to the shop without our assistance. We filled an entire van in our first visit. And I just wanted to say thank you. These types of collaborations are so important to sustaining the critical work that Youth and Family Services does. So Covenant Shores, shout-out, thank you. And it sounds like we need to make another trip and come back and do it again. And speaking of partnerships, really just overwhelming gratitude to the Mercer Island Youth and Family Services Foundation. They reached out a few weeks ago and said, hey, we'd like to help. We know that your budget is tapped. And due to the impact of the SNAP benefit program, we had many people contacting the city needing assistance. The Youth and Family Services Foundation stepped up, made a one-time donation of $30,000 to the city, which allowed us to buy additional food cards. And I have to say, if you've been following this on social media, this spurred a whole movement in the Mercer Island community. It's snowballed. So we have had people out at grocery stores over the weekends collecting more gift card donations. I saw a post this weekend where over $1,000 was generated in gift card donations. So just really, really profound thanks. We are already putting that, those resources back into the community and helping meet household needs during this, what can be a very challenging holiday season. Thank you again, Youth and Family Services Foundation. And that is all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you for that. Our next item of business is appearances, which is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the city council on any item, except items requiring a public hearing or any causative judicial matters or campaign-related matters. City Clerk, do we have anyone sign up for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Tonight's agenda will include in-person public appearances and remote public appearances via Zoom. Individuals wishing to address the council may do so in person or by Zoom or telephone, provided they register with the city clerk by 4:00 PM today. When it's your turn to speak, you'll be called by name. Remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole and not to individual council or staff members. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who becomes boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the city council may be requested to leave the meeting. Please speak audibly, state your name and city of residence for the record. There'll be a timer on the screen. You have three minutes to speak. When your time's ended, I'll thank you for your comments and move to the next speaker or item of business. City Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker tonight is Addie Smith.
I'm going to play a video first. My video, once again, is not working for some reason after I just got it to work on my phone. But that video is three police officers at my former apartment where I used to live prior to being assaulted by a white resident who these counselors know had been attacking me for months, and they never did anything about it. The police, who had known for months, never did anything about it. And when the police came to my home in that video, I'm going to try again when I come back to the next counselor's meeting to get that video to play. But I, but the police chief, Ed Holmes, I think is his name, he sent me an email prior to one of the most vicious assaults wherein I had to defend myself. And then those police officers in the video that I have been trying to play arrested me just for defending myself against a racist white woman. Mercer Island, I'm going to try it one more time to get this video to play. But Mercer Island has taken years of my life. They've taken employment and career opportunities for years. These people sitting right here, every single one of them have taken employment opportunities because they're racist, every single one of them sitting here. I am a black woman. I was attacked by a group of white racists. And these groups of people, who are not all white, because one of them is Muslim and Indian.
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Okay. Can you stop the timer?
I believe that these comments go against the decorum of our body and our rules of procedure.
Okay. City Attorney, is there a point of decorum that I can acknowledge?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under your rules of procedure, which I'll pull up right now for you. Public attack, personal attacks are against your procedures for appearances as well as slander. So if you find that the content of Ms. Smith's current, you know, tonight's appearance includes any slander or personal attacks, you are within your right to either warn her to stop or to cut her appearance short of the two minutes.
Okay. Ms. Smith, can you continue without any slanderous or attacking type language? Do you have a point that you can get to that doesn't include any of that? I'm going to restart your time. If you can conduct yourself in a way that doesn't include those things, we'll let you finish your minute. Go ahead.
I'm going to play the video that I've been trying to play.
We have 10 different orders inside the house.
And the problem is, you guys told her no, that you would not arrest her. But the black lady, the black lady me, I'm the one who gave the protection order. In that video is what I have been saying to the Mercer Island City Council, Mercer Island Police. When the woman attacked me, these same Mercer Island Police Officers in the video that I just showed arrested me for defending myself. And for years, since I defended myself against that one, one of the white people who had been attacking me, Mercer Island allowed this assault to go on my record. They have allowed this to hurt my name. They have allowed this to hurt my reputation. They have allowed this to hurt my employment.
Okay. Who else do we have for public comment?
Our next speaker tonight is Dan Nordeau.
Welcome, Dan.
All right. Yeah, thank you very much. My name is Dan Nordeau. I'm a 22, 23-year resident of Mercer Island. Speaking on two matters. First of all, congratulations to you all for recognizing, for the dedication of the pickleball courts, recognizing the tremendous community service from Jake Jacobson. I think it was a really spectacular gesture, and you're all to be commended for that. The second item relates to the provisions for, to make permanent the regulations for temporary structures. I want to recognize the great work from the Planning Commission. They put a lot of time in. It's really, it's evident in the code that they've presented forward. There's three items that I'd like to call out that caused some concern for the country club. Number one is in log number 19, there's a termination of the entitlement at 20 years. Really, the investment that's been made to expand court access, it really has a longer life than that. And so I certainly understand the provision of wanting to continually review. And I think the other provisions that are in there are fine. I think the termination of the entitlement, going back to square one 20 years in, doesn't reflect the magnitude of investment that's gone into the infrastructure to make that real. That's number one. Log number 22 has some provisions around yard setbacks, which don't reflect, like for us, we've got some, we've negotiated some easements on other property, but technically, strictly speaking, those are additive provisions that we probably wouldn't be able to live with. So the yard setback provisions in number 22. And then this 30-day extension was discussed a lot last time. The need for 30-day extension relates to having 180 days useful life of the facility. The extension's necessary when it's raining at the time you're going to take it down. You can't take down the structure when it's raining because it can't go, it can't be stored wet. So that's when you'd need extension to be able to actually use the facility to the end of its life. And then you need some relief if the weather doesn't cooperate to take it down. Other than that, a lot of great work put in. Really, congratulations. Thanks for the opportunity to provide that feedback.
Thank you. All right. Any other public comment?
There are no further speakers tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. That brings us to the consent agenda. And, uh, City Clerk, I'll give you a moment to put the consent agenda on the screen. It contains 10 items, which are available momentarily on the screen, and they're in the agenda packet. Council, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Second. Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Wyker. Councilmember Wyker, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Sorry. Mayor Nees.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Councilmember Androl.
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Motion passes. Our next item or first item of regular business is AB 6820, the Sound Cities Association Voting Delegate for the North Caucus Meeting. So, Council, this is the moment I look to the council for volunteers, who somebody will volunteer, because I'm not going. Who would like to represent the council for this amazing voting opportunity? Oh, that's right. Bummer.
I'm willing if no one else can, but I would have to reschedule something to make room for it. If there's anyone else who would like to, I'll yield to that.
Councilmember Reynolds, are you going to be around, inclined to?
What is the date?
December 9.
It's a Tuesday.
I should be able to do that. I'll throw my hat in if it's not convenient for Councilwoman Weinberg.
Excellent. Well, Council, is there a motion to appoint Councilmember Reynolds as the voting delegate at the Sound City Association's North Caucus Meeting on December 9, 2025?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Androl. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Nees.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Androl.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
And Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Such a reluctant "aye." We appreciate that, Councilmember Reynolds. Oh, boy.
I feel like a point is a strong word.
Yeah. Our next item of regular business is AB 6808, which is permanent regulations for temporary uses in structures, including outdoor dining. Ordinance number 25C-26, second reading. And we welcome CBD Director Jeff Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. Just a quick sound check. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can.
Excellent. Thank you. Joining me for this item is Molly McGuire, who just popped on the screen. She's going to fire up the slide deck machine here momentarily. We just have just a quick minute or two, a few slides. We're going to walk you through this evening just to set the stage. You can go ahead and advance it. Thank you. A friendly reminder, a couple friendly reminders for the council. This matter initially began to be discussed with the city council at your planning session in 2024, which I believe was in sometime in March 2024. It was at that planning session that direction was provided by the city council to staff to develop interim regulations for temporary uses in structures. We did that. We brought that to you in May of 2024. And the city council did take action and adopt interim regulations a couple weeks later in June of 2024. The interim regulations, we did renew those in 2025 after one year of activity. The Planning Commission began working on permanent regulations to make a recommendation of the city council earlier this year. And on September 10th of this year, the Planning Commission wrapped up their work on this and forwarded a recommendation to the city council, which you received on November 4th, just two weeks ago. At first reading of the ordinance adopting permanent temporary uses in structure regulations, city council directed staff to bring forward an ordinance for second reading tonight that did not accept all of the planning that did not accept all of the Planning Commission recommended changes. The numbers, I won't read all these numbers, but they're on the screen from the the change matrix that was in your packet two weeks ago. These numbered items were removed from the ordinance that is in your packet this evening. And we can forward to the next slide, please. In summary, then, the ordinance that's before you in your packet this evening and is in front of you here tonight, 25C-26, does not include those log numbers. These are the same numbers from the previous slide. What it does include, though, are 16 Planning Commission recommended amendments that are included in the ordinance. The final, we'll go to the final slide here momentarily. The final point I'd like to make, we we do have interim regulations that are still valid on the books. Those are going to expire next month, I believe on December 16. So we we are looking, the idea is we would have some action here this evening that would adopt ordinance 25C-26. Go ahead and forward, Molly, please. And we can bring this effort to a successful conclusion with whatever may be in the final version of the ordinance and get permanent regulations in place and make any operational adjustments that are necessary to implement the permanent regulations. So with that, Mayor, I'm happy to turn the hot mic back over to you. And Molly and I and the city manager, if need be, are happy to support any conversation the council may have here this evening at second reading for this ordinance.
Okay, that's excellent. Counsel, before I turn it over to questions, what I'm going to suggest is that we're going to put a motion on the floor. I'm going to put a motion on the floor to have this ordinance adopted. And then I'm going to open it up for amendments. And to the extent that there are amendments, we're going to table this to the end of the meeting, allow staff to come back, refine the ordinance, and then bring it back for a final vote, if that's acceptable to everybody. And so, counsel, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 25C-26 relating to permanent regulations for temporary uses in structures, including outdoor dining, as shown in Exhibit 1 to this AB?
Sub move.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. And then I'll open it up to questions or amendments. Councilmember Andrell.
I won't know if I have amendments until I have answers to questions, of course. But could somebody tell me if the ordinance is adopted as written, what is the duration of the temporary use permit? If if one is applied for and granted?
A temporary use of structure permit is, once, if it is approved and issued, the permit would be valid for the period of the 180 days that is in the code.
Okay, so a new.
It would be a 180-day permit, a temporary use permit.
So a new application would be required every year?
Correct. And what's associated with a new application and a new permit issued every year are any required review that, are any required reviews that need to be done internally by the city and any required inspections that also need to be done as a result of, in the case of a structure, some sort of structure being erected for that temporary period of time.
Okay.
And just, just to put some color commentary on that, specific to the bubbles that we've been talking about, fall under these regulations, they have to have a minimum electrical inspections and inspections by the Fire Marshall every time they go up.
Okay. Councilmember Andrell.
Yeah, thanks. So I understand from discussions with the Planning Commission that one of the reasons that they proposed a type 2 and type 3 permitting was because some of these structures could be, you know, quite large or intrusive. And having 180 plus 30-day use is is not inconsequential. But that the type 1 permit process right now does not require any notice, public notice at all. And so that the neighbors could have, and I know that this isn't the case with with the Mercer Island Country Club and the bubble, but neighbors could have a temporary use sprung on them without ever having had any way to learn that it had been applied for. Is that correct?
Type 1, type 1 permits, which temporary use and structure permits currently are in the code as adopted by the city council in the interim regulations, do not require public notice. That is correct.
Do you think that that concern that the Planning Commission raised should be addressed in any way?
I think, counsel, Jeff, if I could just tap in here.
Yeah, go ahead.
I I think the thing we have to consider is that there is a range of temporary uses and a range of permits being applied for. So if somebody's seeking a permit to put up a large tent for 10 days, they would have to go through a type 3 permit. I mean, that's how we're trying to, we're trying to tease this out. The bubble, the bubbles are up for 180 days, possibly plus 30, with the variance as drafted. So I I may have to call on Molly or Jeff to talk about some scenarios here. But we did feel that a type 1 use permit was better alignment of staff resources and also customer-friendly, based on the prior direction the council gave us, particularly related to these temporary use bubbles. And that was what our recommendation was based on. Molly, can you correct anything I said in error? Because it's possible that I may make a mistake. Or Jeff.
No errors made in your commentary there, city manager.
Well, I I've heard concerns about staff resources, and I've heard concerns about applicant resource, resources and timelines. But but I haven't heard any concerns for neighboring properties. And I don't know if it can be addressed. I don't know if the majority of the council would have the will to have it addressed in such a way that it was appropriate so that the Girl Scouts did not need to get a type 3 permit, sell cookies, but but in a way that respected neighboring properties who would be subject to the temporary use that that may be significant for 210 days out of the year. And I don't have a motion because I don't, I don't know how to address it in a way to balance all three interests. That is the applicant, the neighbors, and the staff administrative burden.
Well, maybe another question I would ask is, is the code official has the discretion to issue the permit or not. Does anybody have the right to submit a comment or concern to the code official?
So anyone can always.
Yeah, can you, can you explain that? Just, let's give us a thumbnail sketch of a type 1 permit, what that looks like compared to type 3?
Right. The the public noticing is the the primary component, right? With a type 3 permit, public notice is required. That does have the written comment period associated with it. And there is a decision, a formal decision that's issued that then goes out for notice again, essentially, that the decision has been made and the designated appeal period with it. Type 1 permits also do have designated appeal periods. Any permit action made by the city is appealable, regardless of the type number that's associated with it. But the difference is in the noticing and the time it takes to do the notice, the cost of that, and so forth. So some of you may recall, I made a comment two weeks ago. If we were to incorporate a noticing component into these temporary use and structure permits, applicants are going to have to budget the appropriate time in advance for applying for such a permit. And the cost for the city to recover its cost, which is something that we have been mandated by the city council to make every attempt to achieve. The fees for these types of permits would go up substantially. I believe two weeks ago, I said something in the range of 10X to 12X from what they are now. And that would be the cost of doing business to have a permit type that requires the public notice and the notice of decision as well.
And just to be clear, the the notice that we're talking about here would be a very specific notice to people that were within a radius of the proposed site. There is still public notice in terms of the the permit bulletin for all of these temporary uses, as long as well as any other permit. Is that correct?
So bulletin, a notice in the permit bulletin would be included in a type 2, 3, or 4 notice. With type 1s, Molly, can you remind me, we, some type 1s or no type 1s go in the bulletin?
No type 1s go in the bulletin.
No type 1s. So there are no type 1 permits go in the permit bulletin.
So maybe that's, maybe that's the amendment you're looking for is, don't, don't add the cost and time component. But if you want to have some public notice, just have these ones put in the public notice bulletin.
Is that, Jeff or Molly, is that feasible to notice, include type 1 permit in the?
Well, not type 1s, but type 1 temporary uses.
Yeah.
Right. So to to add that additional function to these, what I think the mayor, mayor, if I'm understanding your comment correctly, what you're suggesting is that we would put a simple notice into the permit bulletin that a type 1 temporary use and structure permit has been applied for, but that wouldn't have a formal comment period associated with it. It would just be a notice of an action. A permit has been received by the city. And then a notice that a permit was issued on the back end.
That was, yeah, that was my question.
That's cer, that's certainly possible. That's a code amendment. That's a code amendment we could certainly make. There would be a cost associated with that. I think there would need to be some internal consultation to figure out what that cost would be. It probably wouldn't be as much as doing the full notice that I commented on a moment ago. But it certainly is something that could be calculated and brought back to the council for your review and consideration.
Well, isn't it just the permit number and a description of the project on an electronic document?
It, if if we were to use the format that the bulletin uses currently for notices, it would be a little bit more than that. But yes, it would be information that would be conveyed electronically and put together, conveyed electronically and sent out. That's correct, as part of the permit bulletin.
Okay, so it would be staff time to summarize the permit for publication?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Yes, hopefully my internet connection is stable enough that you can hear me. We'll see. Two related questions. One, how many people get this permit bulletin? What's on your subscription list?
I I don't have the exact number for you, councilmember. We'd be happy to get that and follow up. It is a fairly substantial list of subscribers now. Molly, I would estimate it's in the hundreds, if I'm not mistaken, so.
Jeff, is the bulletin also posted to the website?
Yes.
And what would be the practical implication of including an announcement in there? If we announce it, but there's no public comment period, does it give the public any more rights to do anything?
A type 1 permit is appealable, Councilmember Reynolds.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Wyker.
I'll just add, I'm not sure how extensive the problem is we're trying to solve here. So I'd be inclined to wait and get some feedback from staff before we overcomplicate the rules, the regulations, and the notice.
Councilmember Andrell.
Yeah, I was going to ask whether I should make a motion or just ask the staff to take a look at this and come back. And maybe, since our first reading was kind of abbreviated on election night, maybe a third reading would be appropriate once people have kind of had some time to turn things over and digest them. I I know that we have a little bit of a cushion since we have a December 2 meeting and these regulations on an interim basis are still good for two weeks after that. So what's, I'm kind of just asking procedurally, either the city manager or Jeff.
Practically speaking, you have a motion on the floor to adopt the ordinance. So that would need to be dispensed of one way or the other. And then a different motion to set for a third reading would need to be passed if that is the intent of the council.
Yes, let me ask another way. If at a later date, the council wants to come back and add the type 1 to temporary use permits to the permit bulletin, could they do that?
Yes, the council, I'll be meeting with the council, the next council in January at the planning session. Part of that body of work now is revisiting our work plan, which is changing, given the recent failure of the bond measure. So that would be the opportunity for the council to talk about the body of work in front of us in 2026 and identify any items that they would like to add or subtract from the list.
And then remind me, we had an open work plan item, which was circling back on the residential design standards. And in the RDS, there was a noticing component that I believe there was some inclination to tune up. Was there work that needed to be done on noticing around RDS as well?
The the residential development standards are, I will just note that the legislature has given us a lot of directives over the last two years regarding housing. And there's considerable overlap with residential development standards. Some of the requirements have already, that we had in the RDS have already changed, and more are likely coming. I'm probably grossly oversimplifying that. Jeff would like to add on to that. So we have, we have in effect tabled the deep dive on the RDS while we've been dealing with all these other changes with the legislature. Jeff, did you want to say anything?
Two comments, if I may. The first one, actually, before I forget, the first one, and I made my comment about permit bulletin there a few minutes ago. Our city clerk finally sent me a message to say I oversubscribed the bulletin. There are 127 current subscribers to the bulletin. I, in error, said there were several hundred. So I stand corrected on that, and thank you, Andrea, for correcting me on that. The second comment, then, to what the city manager just spoke to. The, I I think some of the conversations surrounding noticing with the RDS involved the, how we notice new single-family construction building permits. We do notice those. Molly, those are noticed as a type 2, I believe. Type 3?
Type 3.
Yeah. New single-family construction is currently noticed as a type 3. I believe we've had some internal discussion that that is, that was instituted with the the RDS back in 2017. And that may be an area that is going to become increasingly problematic with legislation as it moves forward. So that is something that may need to be looked at here at some point, sooner than later.
Okay. Councilmember Andrell.
Yeah, one last thing. So if we adopt these, this ordinance is written today and don't do anything about the type 1 permit being noticed in the bulletin, can we make that as a policy change later on? Or does that involve an actual code amendment?
I would recommend that it is code amendment. We did, we did docket these temporary use and regulations formally through the docket process. That was in 2024, I believe. So that docket item is still there. We don't have to close that docket item out. So if the council wanted to let this ride for a period of time and circle back to it at a later date, I think it would be fair to say we could make a pretty straightforward determination that we can leave the docket matter still open for temporary use and reg, so we wouldn't have to go through a docketting process down the road. And we could supplement this work if the council desired at some future moment in time.
How would I, how would I go about asking staff to explore the feasibility and cost of making top permits, a permit bulletin item?
Well, let me circle back to Jeff. To keep the docket item open, do you need an amendment to the motion? Would it close naturally by passing the second reading?
I think what I would like to suggest that you do, if there's council will here, is that we deal with the motion related to the ordinance and any amendments to the ordinance as as one motion for the record. If the council has further direction on this topic to keep the docket open and to have us revisit items, let's do that as a second standalone motion. That that would help me keep the record clean.
Okay. Back to Councilmember Andrell's question. Do you want to restate it just?
Well.
You were asking about development of costs.
Yeah, how would, how would, how would we best direct staff or request that staff develop feasibility and costs?
feasibility and costs for publishing this in the permit bulletin so that we would, council would know whether that was something that was a no-brainer to ask for or that it would be, you know, too, too chilling on the applicant?
Councilmember Andrell, if you give me about three minutes while you continue your discussion on the ordinance, I'd be happy to draft a motion for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, wow. All right, any other amendments to the motion? It's going to be a long three minutes of silence.
Well, maybe I have some more questions. Let's.
I'll take a shot at a question, Director Thomas. There was a, there was an amendment, a substantive amendment that was suggesting that beyond summer celebration, additional community events be exempted from certain provisions like farmer's market. Can you just speak to, you know, the negative implications of doing something like that? What, what would, would that be a bad idea, a good idea?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think, you know, what that boils down to in consultation with our colleagues over in the Parks Division on this question, it boils down to city-executed events versus city-sponsored events. And with city-executed events, like summer celebration, for example, the internal coordination is happening, you know, in regards to check and balancing using public rights away, for example, closing public rights away, other very important, but, you know, things that the council and even most of the staff would generally see, like making sure that any appropriate, you know, insurance provisions are, you know, in place and other public safety type of coordination behind the scene. So with city-executed events, all that stuff happens. It's, you know, self-propelling, more or less. The city does get involved with, you know, whether it be through just, you know, marketing or sometimes in more formal, you know, inter-local or contractual type arrangements with other events, but they're not city-executed events. We simply are, you know, we have some sort of hand in them, but not the full hand. And what's important there is that there are other important provisions that need to be accounted for, some of the things that I just mentioned. So we want to be mindful of distinguishing between events that the city is truly driving forward and putting on or executing ourselves versus ones that we're not. And, you know, I want to thank Brian Daley actually was instrumental in, in really explaining to me some of the finer details in that, and it was very helpful information.
Okay, thanks.
I have another question.
Councilmember Andrell?
Thanks. So related to that, what type of a permit, if any, does Mercer Island Farmer's Market get now if they don't get a temporary use permit? Because they didn't exist until a year and a half ago.
Right.
They're likely obtaining a right-of-way, right-of-way use permit, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, and that event is, my understanding is that event is one of the important events that the city does have more of a structured contractual arrangement with.
Okay.
If I could just add on to the special event discussion, you know, the challenge with permitting events and, and writing exemptions is that special events, of all the things we do in the city, I think special events are the most complex. It's like 331 flavors of ice cream. Every event is different. Every event has a different operators, different fundamental components, different people, different risks, different liabilities, different locations, different times of year. I appreciate the way we do event permitting right now, which is everybody needs to come through us for a special event permit and a right-of-way use permit. These temporary use permits also help. It allows us to meet people on the front side. We get important details worked out, including things like insurance requirements, which matter to us a lot, versus being on the backside where an event is happening and something's going wrong. None of this changes our strong relationships with our partners, including the Farmer's Market, but it would be my preference that the Farmer's Market not be exempted. It is not a city event. We are partnering on the event. And again, I think that nothing changes fundamentally, but it does allow us to continue to engage when people are hosting events and activities in the right-of-way, which we, we care about a lot.
Okay. Any other questions, councilmember Andrell?
No, I mean, I can probably find some if I need to buy the city manager some more time.
I, I did. Councilmember Andrell, you should have your email motion, which I would recommend you present after the council votes on the ordinance.
While we're, while she's reading that, Director Thomas, there was a, there was an amendment, substantive amendment by the Planning Commission to add the PBZ zone and the CO zone to certain provisions. Can you speak to that just briefly?
Yeah, the, the item, the staff response to that item, we, there are very few properties and we're actually not sure if there's any properties where that provision would directly apply to by adding those two zones. So that was one of the substantive amendments that we, we, it couldn't in effect be a completely unnecessary amendment if we were able to confirm at some point there are no properties, but short of that, there would be very few properties that would be affected by that amendment that was proposed by the Planning Commission.
You know, some of the context that I was looking for is when we think about the CO zone, which is ostensibly where the former city hall is, you have a sidewalk and the sidewalk fronts 36. The permit would be to conduct some business in the right-of-way, which is the sidewalk adjacent to the business. You know, the adding of this substantive provision would allow somebody to get a permit to put, let's say, some type of tented commerce in the sidewalk on 36, as long as they have an adjacent business that had a current permit. You know, it's, it's not the same as doing that in town center where you might have a 20-foot sidewalk that's in front of a mixed-use building. It's a three or four-foot sidewalk on a busy road with a bike lane. You know, I'm not sure that the extent, the discussion that happened at the Planning Commission when they thought about, well, something's allowed in town center and we allow certain things in the CO and PBZ zone, maybe we should allow this stuff over there. The, the infrastructure is quite different, isn't it?
It is. I, I think one of the key distinguishments there though is, in the town center, as you correctly pointed out, there's often some sort of pedestrian thoroughfare that is not actually in the public right-of-way, but actually comes onto private property, you know, which is where we're looking at many of the temporary provisions here that are up for discussion this evening. What can happen though, using the city hall property as an example that you brought up a moment ago, once, you know, what's happening in that type of situation is you're actually exiting the private property or in this case, the city-owned real property and moving over the line into the public right-of-way. So then that, that tent or that, that use, whatever it may be, is actually occurring in the public right-of-way as opposed to on real property, where in the town center, that's not going to necessarily be the case.
Okay, I appreciate that color. All right, so you have a follow-along motion?
I, I do. Well, no, I, I believe that the recommendation is I make this motion once the motion that's on the floor is voted on.
Okay, so I got a motion on the floor.
But I do have one other question, and that is just if the, Jeff, if you can just tell me, what's the approximate amount of time for a type one permit from application to granting or denial?
Well, it depends on the type one permit. Let me start by qualifying that. For temporary use and structure permits, I would, provided we receive a complete application from the start, that's a, that's about a one week to a week and a half review time.
Okay, thanks. Great.
Okay. All right, council, any other amendments, any motions, any, all right, nothing? All right, I'm going to call the roll. City clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Mayor Nice?
Aye.
Councilmember Becker?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
And Councilmember Weinberg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion passes. Councilmember Andrell, would you like to make a motion?
I would. I would move to direct the city manager to keep the docket item related to temporary uses and structures open and return to the city council in 2026 with options to include public notification as part of the temporary uses and structures type one permit.
Okay, it's moved by Councilmember Andrell, seconded by Mayor Nice. You want to speak to the motion?
Oh, I think I've already talked a lot, but I do think, you know, above all, the, the citizens value about council is some level of transparency, that they can see what's going on in city business and why. And the type one, maybe for other types of activities, nobody cares if they're getting noticed or not. This I could really see being a real hot button for the citizens and I think it costs, potentially costs us very little to do and, and increases the transparency with which we conduct our business, and so I think it's a good thing.
Excellent. Councilmember Reynolds?
I was just going to ask, can we put the motion up on the screen, please?
One second.
While we're doing that, Jeff, just really quickly, how many, under the interim regulations, how many temporary structure use permits, temporary use, I just jumbled that, did we receive?
Molly, you've got the number, I believe. We talked about this recently.
Yes, it was four in 2024 and I believe there's been three in 2025.
Counsel, one of the things that I would anticipate, if we start to see, most of these permits that are coming in are for these, these temporary structures to cover athletic facilities, also known as our BUBBLES. If the staff is starting to observe a change, different requests, and these regulations are no longer meeting those needs, we would certainly also come back to you to discuss amendments that need to be made.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds, is that, are you able to see that on your screen there?
Yes, I can. Very helpful, thank you. No further comments.
Okay. I'll just add a quick comment that, you know, on the outset of the, of the interim regulations, which was a remarkable idea by Councilmember Andrell to, to help the country club achieve their goal, was to implement these through interim regs, we set out to solve a problem that the community had, and I think the council got really close to the mark with the work that they did, because the amendments that came back, while there were good ones from the Planning Commission, 16, I think that were included. The idea isn't to make it more complicated than it needs to be. It is, at the end of the day, a temporary use permit. And the worst that can happen is something can be allowed for 180 days and a 30-day extension, and then the permit doesn't need to be issued again. I commend the effort to look for noticing and better opportunities for people to have more transparency, but I also think that we set out to solve a problem that was kind of pervasive in the community. And solving that problem by adding more complexity to make it more difficult to have solved that problem, to me, is not the direction the government should be going. We've got 99 other problems, all of them much more significant than this. I, I commend the effort to keep the docket item open so that this is re-approachable at any time, and so I will support the motion. Okay, city clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Becker?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker?
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg?
Epstein?
Councilmember Reynolds?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell?
Aye.
And Mayor Nice?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that passes, and that brings us to our next item of regular business, which is AB 6815, the public hearing amendments to the historical designation criteria in MICC 16.01.030 to comply with House Bill 1576, ordinance number 25C-28, first reading. We're going to have a public hearing, which is now open as of 6:03 PM. Individuals who register with the city clerk's office before 4:00 PM today may make public comment on this agenda item. You'll be called by name when it's your turn to speak. Please speak audibly. State your name and city residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. City clerk, do we have anyone sign up for public comment for the public hearing?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, since there's no public testimony this evening, the public portion of this hearing is closed as of 6:04 PM, and we welcome CPT Director Jeff Thomas.
Thank you again, Mayor. Joining me for this item is Assistant Planner Madeline Nelson. She's going to run you through about eight slides, a relatively short presentation on this matter, changes to chapter 16 of the Mercer Island Municipal Code. This item is in response to some state legislation that we want to make sure we are in compliance with. And Madeline, at this point, I'll turn it over to you to start the slide deck and walk the council through the slides, please.
Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Sure can.
Of course. Thank you so much. Okay, great. Thank you. I believe I have my screen shared, but hello, city council. It is a pleasure to, to be speaking with you today. My name is Madeline. I am an assistant planner and I'm here to talk about amendments to Mercer Island City Code, chapter 16.01, to comply with statewide legislation. So our purpose today is to conduct a public hearing and complete a first reading of our proposed ordinance updating historical designation criteria. Then we will schedule a second reading and adoption. So the state updated the requirements for the historical designation process via House Bill 1576 affecting all code cities. The bill took effect in July of this year and is currently able to supersede any conflicting local regulations. So staff are proposing a code amendment to incorporate the requirements of this bill into Mercer Island City Code to be consistent with state law. This bill does require that cities may only designate a historic building or site if it exceeds 40 years in age. And if the designation would restrict, would restrict use of the property, then written consent of the owner of the property must be obtained prior to designation, unless the property is within a recognized historic district or if the nominator of the property has provided written documentation to show that the property exceeds 125 years old and the city is able to, to confirm this age as well. And to give some background information into what historical designation means, if a property is historically designated, then that property can only be altered in ways consistent with their historical past. And in exchange for these nominated property rights, incentives like developer agreements, special assessed valuation, and certain tax credits become available as described in MICC chapter 16.01. So to comply with House Bill 1576, it would only require two amendments to Mercer Island City Code, section 16.01.30 for historical designation criteria. This code section currently describes a building or site in any zone. They qualify for a historical designation if it is more than 50 years old and is associated with significant historical events or figures, or if the building or site embodies a distinctive historical architectural, like, design or style. So as you can see, there really isn't much code that conflicts with the House Bill, so it really is just about codifying additional requirements described in the bill. So to bridge the gap between what the code currently states and what is required by House Bill 1576, the code amendment as proposed keeps the original criteria while adding standards related to property owner consent. So only two additional standards would be needed to meet the state requirements. And a summary of these standards would read, if historical designation would restrict the use, alteration, or demolition of the property, then written consent from the property owner is required prior to designation. However, written consent is not needed if the property is within, within an area recognized as a historical district via ordinance or if the property exceeds 125 years old. There are additional changes described in the amendment packet to parts A and C, but that's entirely for stylistic consistency, and that does not alter the effect of that code section in any way. So overall, the changes proposed would not affect the two existing historic landmarks established by the city and would only require property owner consent in the, in the described circumstances. So for the next steps, after our first reading tonight, we are planning on having a second reading and adoption on December 2, 2025. And that kind of brings us to the end of this slide deck, so thank you very much for your time. If that we can begin. So thank you very much for your time. If that way we can begin discussion of the code amendments. And if there's any follow-up questions, I'd love to answer them.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds?
That's kind of a nit question, but I, just to get straight on terminology, property to me means land. Does, in this context, does property mean property improvements? Because obviously, the land is always more than 125 years old.
Yeah, of course. That's actually kind of an interesting question. Um, in the bill, I believe it's described as a property, which does mean like a physical land or building. But in our code, in Mercer Island City Code, um, we really refer to it as a circle designation, being able to be applied to, um, building, structures, or sites. So it would be applicable to building, structures, or sites. But that is a bit of a terminology interesting question.
So the 125-year criteria will be applied to the, to the buildings or other improvements, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
O- o- okay, thank you. I assume that was the case.
Okay, Council, any other questions? No? All right.
Um, okay. Well, I was just gonna say, does this really need a second reading?
Well, Council, is there a motion to set ordinance number 25C dash 28 for second reading and adoption? We'll see.
So moved.
Councilmember Reynolds? Moved? Is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
There's a question. Uh, i- if we want to waive the second reading and just pass it tonight, uh, would that require an amendment to the motion that is currently on the floor?
It would.
Uh, or would it require a new motion?
I mean, can I just ask, what is the, like, what are we, what's the benefit of doing that?
The benefit is that if we, uh, pass it tonight, then we don't have to bring it back for a second reading.
It's gonna be on consent. I mean, it's, it's not gonna take any, burn up any council time.
Uh, is the consent on, uh, just the, the December 2nd meeting? Or be, is this the thing requiring our December 16th meeting?
No.
No, this is not the item that may trigger a second meeting, but thank you for that concern. This would go on consent to your December 2nd meeting.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it's the.
No big deal.
I appreciate the efficiency-first thought. Okay. And not seeing any other questions, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Count, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Our next item of regular business is AB 6814, which is the 2025-2026 Mid-Biennial Budget Public Hearing Financial Status Update and Budget Adjustments. This public hearing is now open as of 6:12 PM. Individuals who register with the city clerk's office before 4:00 PM today may make a public comment on this agenda item. You'll be called by name when it's your turn to speak. Please speak audibly. State your name and city residence for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public, uh, comment on this hearing?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. As there's no individual signed up to speak, we'll close the public portion of this hearing at 6:12 PM. And welcome Finance Director Matt Morne.
Good evening, Mayor Neese, members of the council and city manager bond. I'm Matt Morne, your finance director. And welcome to the mid-biennial discussion for the 2025-2026 Biennial Budget. I'm joined remotely this evening by Deputy Finance Director LaJuan Tuttle and our financial analyst too, Ben Schumacher, who is gonna be steering our deck tonight. Next slide, Ben?
Thank you.
We're gonna go through 17 slides, beginning with an update on the city's financial position through Q3 of this year. I'm gonna share some trends and some highlights from the detailed analysis provided as part of this agenda item in exhibit two. We're gonna then turn our attention to the regular budget actions that the city council takes every year regarding setting property taxes, as well as the budget for emergency dispatch services. Before, we go into a handful of budget adjustments that staff is recommending at this point to address emerging issues that have risen since the budget was adopted in December of 2024. I'm gonna pause for questions along the way, as well as at the end of the deck. And I want to thank LaJuan and Ben and many of the staff who worked on all of the information that's before council tonight. Next slide. Okay. We're gonna start with, uh, the financial status update. Uh, next slide, please. At the end of September, the city's revenues, uh, for the general fund were at 72% of budget, which is precisely within budget expectations. Compared to the prior year, our, our revenues at the end of September were about $300,000 more in the general fund. This is a marginal, um, increase compared to the prior year, but it, it's, it's worth noting. And it's been largely driven by the revenues we're receiving from sales tax, business and occupation tax, as well as, uh, work in, uh, the Parks and Recreation Department. So compared to 2024, January through the end of September, our sales tax revenues are about $380,000 higher. Setting aside, uh, the retail sector, which was, uh, slightly lower in 2025 relative to 2024, all other business sectors are performing better in 2025, with the construction sector making up the largest component of our sales tax revenues. Business and occupation tax revenues are up, uh, $370,000 in 2025, uh, compared to last year. This is a tax on businesses' gross receipts. And as such, it is tied to, um, economic activity within the region, and it is also somewhat difficult to predict. So what we're experiencing right now are revenues that are historic high. At least, um, as far back as seven years, we haven't seen this level of, of revenue coming in for being out of taxes. So this is good news, um, and we are dealing with an instance where our budget estimates are, are being, our, our budget actuals are outpacing our budget estimates significantly. So this, uh, information is gonna inform, um, our, our revenue projections for the 2027 and 2028 budget next year.
Could I get a question?
Question, Councilmember Andrell?
Yeah. I, I must be reading this wrong. I mean, if, if you add up 380 and 370 and 411, that's like over a million. So why does the second bullet say we're only up 300,000?
Right. So we're comparing these three revenue streams in, in isolation. What I showed you was the net revenue, um, difference, um, of $300,000 relative to the prior year. So the city has upwards of, of 50 different revenue streams. We classify them and categorize them in about 10 different groups. So the net difference between the two years is, uh, $300,000 in, in the green.
Okay, so others are down?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And so, uh, just to, to wrap this slide up, um, as I mentioned earlier, um, we, uh, Parks and Recreation Operations have generated $400,000 more revenue in 2025 through Q3 compared to 2024. And this is exciting news, and it's tied to improvements that the team has made around rentals for both the community center and, uh, the city's fields. Next slide. For 2025, the, the gross revenue target for Parks and Rec was 1.41 million. And you can see, at the end of Q3 of this year, we exceeded that target by about $120,000. The pro forma on the right of this slide just provides a little bit of background in detail on what is going on with rentals, uh, out of Parks and Recreation. The percent increase between January and, and the end of Q3 of this year relative to the prior year. So the community center is in blue, and you can see that gym bookings and, and room bookings are, are up. And, uh, the, the bars in green are tied to the city's fields. Jason Kitner, our Chief of Operations, and the Parks and Rec team could, could give you a masterclass. They would love nothing more to give you a masterclass in the efforts that are underway that are, are driving this, uh, this revenue growth. But at, at a high level, what's happening essentially is there's a new online portal that staff is utilizing in 2025 that is giving customers the ability to see in real time the availability of community center rooms, rental spaces, as well as field spaces. They, this online portal also allows customers to book field rentals in real time online. And finally, um, the team is using a new technique called rental stacking, which sequentially allows, allows them to sequentially schedule multiple uses within the same room or the same field versus scheduling multiple rentals across many of our assets. The effect of that is we're being more efficient, we're able to make more rentals within a given unit at a time, like a day, and it's, it's allowing us to, to secure more rentals. And so these changes matter. It's exciting. And we're, we're looking forward to seeing what the Parks and Rec team does to, to build on this momentum in 2026. Next slide, please. On the other side of the ledger, the expenditures in the general fund are at 78% of budget at the end of Q3, which is within budget expectations. Setting aside the fact that just costs between 2025 and 2024 have gone up, we are spent, we have spent through the end of Q3 about $2 million more in the general fund, um, compared to the prior year. And that is predominantly tied to a couple things. First, a one-time transfer of prior year savings in the general fund for the building acquisition, um, that was completed in September of this year. Under council's direction, we set aside $3.3 million to, to acquire the, the building, uh, which we'll speak to in a bit. And the second, um, factor in play is, um, the second of three payments to shift the time accrual liability, um, from Mercer Island to Eastside Fire and Rescue. As the council is aware, um, this time accrual liability essentially represents a reserve of the value of personal time off that firefighters accrued but had not yet used prior to the transition from Mercer Island to Eastside Fire on January 1st of 2024. And so the final payment on this, on this liability will go out in Q1 of next year. Next slide. Just a brief update on, uh, real estate excise taxes. As the council is aware, this 0.5% tax on property transactions is a non-general fund revenue. It is also the primary resource in the capital improvement fund for parks, um, facilities, and, and streets. And so this, this table gives you a, a five-year pro forma of the activities on the number of properties sold on average per month from 2021 to 2025, between January and September 30th, and the resulting total revenues, um, from those, those property transactions. Since 2021, you'll notice that, that REIT revenues have steadily declined. However, uh, real estate activity that we observed in 2024, even though it is low, it is holding steady through 2025. And so we are, at the end of Q3, um, meeting budget expectations despite recognizing that this is a period where REIT revenues are, are historically very low. And so staff anticipated this. We built this into the budget. And so we are meeting our budget expectations and working with the resources that we have. Next slide. Are there any questions on the financial status update?
Okay. Council, any questions? Nope, not seeing any. Thank you.
Okay. Next slide, please. Okay. Next slide. Every November, the council reviews and adopts property tax levy ordinances for the upcoming year. As the council is aware, cities may increase their property taxes by 1% or by the implicit price deflator, um, whichever is less. And so for 2026, the maximum increase that we can put forward is, is 1%. State law requires that all cities in King County submit their property tax ordinances by the end of November. And so before you this evening are two ordinances to set the property tax rates, uh, and amounts for 2026, both for the regular levy and for the 2022 Parks Operations and Maintenance Levy Lift Lift, as illustrated on this slide. And so the, the total increase between the two levies from 2025 to 2026 is $320,000. Next slide. Similarly, the city's emergency dispatch provider, Northeast King County Regional Public Safety Communication Agency, they adopt their annual budget every December each fiscal year. And so all, all the, the cities who receive services from NORCOM must adopt their, their contribution before November 30th. And so for 2026, the city's been notified that the, um, contribution for, um, the Mercer Island specifically for emergency dispatch services for the police department is just north of $706,000. This has already been built into the, the budget. It's about an $8,400 increase relative to 2025. And so there's a resolution included this evening before council to, to adopt the, the 2026.
I have a question for Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Yes.
How does that change? Is that, is that aligned in the budget we passed last year in terms of what the prediction was?
Yeah, yes. It, it came in under what we, we anticipated. There was a significant increase.
Right.
In 2024 to 2025, a 25% increase. So we were bracing for something similar. It's good to see that, um, NORCOM has, um, a marginal increase going into '26.
Okay, thanks. Cause I, I remember it being a lot more last year than, okay, great.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope. All right, carry on.
Okay. It's standard practice, uh, every mid-biennium for staff to, to bring forth recommendations to adjust the budget in response to emerging needs and changes since the budget was actually adopted by council in December 2024. And so we are recommending a total of five adjustments across three funds that amount to about $450,000. Most of these adjustments are tied to the acquisition of the, uh, new building. But we're gonna go through each one of these that are summarized on this slide. Next slide. The first three adjustments, um, are tied to the 9655, uh, building, which is located at 9655 Southeast 36th Street. This building was acquired in September, and under council direction, staff sold the $1.5 million in limited tax general obligation bonds to put towards those proceeds towards the, the building's purchase. And so in 2026, we anticipate, uh, beginning to pay debt service on that bond sale of $137,500. And staff recommends that, that the payment for that debt service come out of the capital improvement fund unassigned fund balance. Second, uh, we're recommending a $30,000 budget adjustment for real estate services that were, um, used to conclude the, the building's acquisition, and that payment for those services come out of the unassigned fund balance in the general fund. And finally, um, we now own a building, which is great news. And the staff team is very excited about that. And work is well underway to map out a plan to phase in renovations while figuring out exactly how we're gonna relocate staff. But we need to set aside resources to operate and maintain that building, at least, um, while it, it's under minimal use in 2026. So staff is recommending a $50,000 appropriation so that we can, can pay for utilities and minimal maintenance and operation of that building. Payment for this budget adjustment is going to come out of revenues that the building is generating from its, its leases. So, um, this is, um, can be absorbed, uh, as a result of the building's purchase. We're anticipate coming back to council with a more informed recommendation on what it's gonna cost to maintain and operate this building once we got our game plan in place as part of the 27, 28 budget development process. Next slide. Okay. Uh, as the council is well aware, um, in August of this year, the Growth Management Hearing Board levied a decision that resulted in the city making mandatory changes to the comprehensive plan by July, uh, of 2026. And so, once that decision was made, work began in earnest with outside consultants to start working on those changes. And that work includes, um, land capacity modeling, um, creating development scenarios, as well as projecting the impacts of, of new changes, um, to the comprehensive plan and what those impacts are gonna be on the, the, the city's public infrastructure. And so we are recommending a $200,000 appropriation. And because of the nature of this work, it's tied to long-range planning, this resource cannot be covered by permit revenues. It has to be covered by general government resources. So we're recommending that this appropriation come out of the unassigned fund balance in the general fund. of the unassigned fund balance in the general fund. As the council knows, this decision has significantly impacted the '25-'26 work plan, as City Manager Bond mentioned earlier. And so there's going to be more to come in early 2026 at the city council's planning session regarding the additional work underway, the work ahead, and some of the policy decisions for the council to tackle next year. Next slide. Final budget amendment simply authorizes staff to immediately put to use a $30,000 contribution that City Manager Bond mentioned earlier from the Mercer Island Youth and Family Services Foundation. This is going to be put to immediate use with council's authorization to assist food and secure community members that are dealing with the ramifications of the federal government's ending of the longstanding, 35-year longstanding SNAP program. And so I also want to extend our deep gratitude for the Mercer Island Foundation stepping up and also signaling that there potentially may be more help to come. Next slide. So these are the four recommended actions for council's consideration this evening, summarized on this slide. We can return to this slide as needed, but we can... Ben, please go ahead and stop sharing the deck, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the council.
All right, any remaining questions? All right, not seeing any. So council, we're going to start with a series of motions. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 25-33 amending the 2025-2026 biennial budget? Okay, so it's moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilor Weinberg. Not seeing any discussion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion passes. Council, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 25-30 appropriating funds and establishing the amount of property taxes to be levied for fiscal year 2026?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Andrell, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. Not seeing any discussion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
And Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion passes. Next, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 25-31 establishing the dollar amount and percentage increases of the regular property tax levy and the levy lift lifts for fiscal year 2026?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Councilwoman Weinberg, seconded by Councilmember Andrell. Not seeing any discussion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
And Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion passes. Lastly, council, is there a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1684 approving NORCOM's 2026 budget allocation to the city of Mercer Island?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Becker, seconded by Councilwoman Weinberg. Not seeing any discussion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Wyker.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
And Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion passes. Mr. Mourning, did we get all your motions? Any more motions you've got for us?
You nailed it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next item of regular business is AB 6819, the Fire Apparatus Acquisition and Financing Ordinance Number 25-34. We welcome management analyst Carson Hornsby. Remotely, I presume. Oh, we're here.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I'm Carson Hornsby, management analyst. I'm joined tonight by Finance Director Matt Mourning and Deputy Chief Greg Garrett of Eastside Fire and Rescue. The three of us will be covering different portions of this presentation on AB 6819 this evening. The purpose of this agenda bill is to conduct first reading of ordinance 2534 authorizing the acquisition and... Excuse me, acquisition and financing of type 1 fire apparatus. I'm going to start things off by sharing a little bit of background information on this purchase, and then I'll hand it off to Greg Garrett of Eastside Fire and Rescue to cover the apparatus that is proposed to replace one of the city's reserve engines. From there, Matt will be covering the two agreements that are part of the ordinance. The first is a joint purchase agreement between the city, Eastside Fire and Rescue, and Hughes Fire Equipment for the purchase of a total of four engines, one for the city and three for EFER. And then the second agreement is a lease-purchase agreement with... between the city and municipal asset management to finance the city's apparatus. He'll talk about the budgetary impacts and then hand it back over to the mayor for questions and discussion. Next slide, please. Beginning in January 2024, the city contracted with Eastside Fire and Rescue to provide Mercer Island with fire and emergency medical services. Per the ILA, the city owns its own fleet and is therefore responsible for purchasing its own engines, while on the other hand, Eastside Fire and Rescue maintains and operates the city's fleet. In February earlier this year, the city council approved ordinance 2504 authorizing the acquisition and financing of two fire engines. Ultimately, that purchase did not end up happening. At the time of the passage of that ordinance, the city was still negotiating with Hughes Fire Equipment to either place a cap or remove a certain contract clause. The clause in question is a component price volatility clause that allows the manufacturer to pass along price increases from the supplier onto the customer without any sort of ceiling or maximum amount. Ultimately, that purchase was placed on hold because we were unable to come to terms on that. And so the city ended up coming back to the drawing board with Eastside Fire and Rescue to figure out next steps. Next slide, please. So the city and EFER regrouped in September, and by earlier this month in November, the specifications were completed for a new type 1 apparatus to replace one of the city's reserves. The second apparatus that the city had planned to purchase is unfortunately not available yet for purchase. There are some new standards that were introduced this year, and so the manufacturer is still working on making that available to purchase. So you can expect another ordinance later on in 2026 to finalize that purchase. Ultimately, for this purchase agreement, the recommendation from Eastside Fire and Rescue is that the city purchase an enforcer pumper, which is manufactured by Pierce Manufacturing. This is considered a semi-custom apparatus, meaning that the specifications were built out through the Build My Pierce program. It offers sort of a standardized list of customizations that you can add on to the apparatus. And then, as long as the city stays within those specifications, there will be a less expensive price tag and faster delivery time in comparison to fully custom. The recommendation meets industry standards, and it's also consistent with Eastside Fire Rescue's existing fleet, which is all manufactured by Pierce as well. So, next slide. I believe Greg is going to cover the two apparatus.
Thank you, Carson. Mayor Neese, council members. As mentioned, back in February, the council had approved the purchase of two fire apparatus. The first of those is the, what we call a MIDI. That is MIDI 192. It's up for replacement. It is a specialty vehicle designed to handle, in particular, the shorter wheelbase for the narrower driveways of the hillside properties. It is a custom apparatus. It's not standard out there. The biggest issue that we have... So we have the design ready to go. Due to a 2028 emissions change, we are currently waiting for a manufacturer that is able to design an engine or a power plant that will beat the 2028 specifications. There are currently none of those available, but we hope to have a manufacturer have a unit approved shortly. So we look forward to 2026 being able to come back to you for the purchase on that. Next slide. So what we're here before you tonight is for the replacement of the fire engine. Our recommendation is the Pierce Enforcer. This is consistent with what we'll be purchasing. It'll be four identical fire engines, 750-gallon tank, 1,500 gallons per minute. This is going to be very similar to the most recent fire engine that Mercer Island purchased, Engine 191. And with the joint pricing that we went through, the total price, $1,267,470. The advantage, believe it or not, is that we're down to a 31- to 36-month delivery time, which seems like a long time. But if we were to go outside of the Build My Pierce, we're looking at roughly 50 to 55 months for delivery time. So we believe that this is the best way to serve the citizens of Mercer Island and as Eastside for our customers as well, over there. And I'll turn that over to Matt.
We learned a lot this past year. And in September, we regrouped and decided to draft a new joint purchase agreement with Eastside to acquire four vehicles. So the joint purchase agreement really served as a new starting point with negotiations with an eye towards equitably sharing the risks that come with building one of these large pieces of equipment and financing it for all the parties that are involved. And so what we did with this new purchase agreement was we included a scaled escalator that's tied to the producer price index, which essentially is looking to mitigate the risk of any additional inflation or any significant increases in tariffs between the city, Eastside Fire, and the manufacturer. We also put in place a price cap of 10% of the purchase price. Should there be any increases to major components of these vehicles that are built outside of Pierce? So, for example, the transmission or the water pump, these are not built directly by Pierce. They're built by third parties. And so there's a total price cap now. Through this whole experience, the city is going to retain the right to review and approve any price adjustments over the next three years. Next slide. While we negotiated this joint purchase agreement, Carson led the charge on requesting bids from investors who specialize in financing the acquisition of fire apparatus from municipalities and fire districts. And so we are going to proceed, or staff recommends we proceed, with a lease-purchase agreement, which essentially is an installment contract where the city, with every annual payment we make on this financing agreement, we accrue ownership of that vehicle over time and take full ownership of it at the end of a nine-year term. And so Municipal Asset Management proposed the most favorable terms as outlined in the table on this slide. And we recommend we proceed with this lease-purchase agreement with Municipal Asset Management. Next slide. Debt service payments on that financing agreement will take effect next year. And so the debt service payments are going to come out of the city's equipment rental fund, the city's sinking fund for managing and maintaining and replacing its fleet. However, based on the price of this new apparatus and the new reality that the city is facing with buying large equipment and large emergency equipment, we anticipate returning to the council as part of the 2728 budget process with some new funding strategies and recommendations to ensure that the resources that we're setting aside and our fleet fund keep pace with the cost of these vehicles. Next slide. Ordinance number 25-34 is before you tonight, and it authorizes the city manager to enter into the joint purchase agreement, which has already been agreed to by all three parties, and the lease-purchase agreement with Municipal Asset Management. With that, we'll stop sharing the deck. Thank you so much, Ally, and answer any questions.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
What's the expected lifespan of the enforcer?
20 years.
15 frontline, 5 reserve.
Yeah, 15 frontline and 5 reserve, although it might be the city's practice to put it on the frontline, meaning it's a primary response vehicle for 10 years, and then thereafter, for the final 10 years, it becomes a reserve vehicle. But we will also heed the advice from our partners at Eastside.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Andrell.
Yeah, thanks. Do we get any money for the equipment that's being retired?
Yes, and I'll hand it over to Chief Garrett.
Great question. So the surplusing market is volatile. It's hard to say what it will be, especially in three years, but our anticipation is a ceiling of about $50,000 for the secondary market.
Wow, those guys depreciate fast, don't they?
Well, they've been over a long... Served many years and do depreciate, yeah.
Yeah, so just a smaller community that has little money would buy that and kind of try to get extra life out of it?
That's correct. There are many rural departments in the United States that depend on the secondary market for fire apparatus.
Thanks.
Okay, Councilman Reynolds.
If only it fit in my garage, perhaps I could bid on it. But just a quick question. The... I believe you had stats up there that said it was a 750-gallon tank, and you ran 1,500 gallons per minute of water, which suggests the tank would run dry in about 30 seconds, which, not a firefighter, that seems pretty fast. So my question is, how many... Presumably, that's not really an issue because you'd be hooked up to a fire hydrant most of the time. How many homes on Mercer Island are not within reach of a fire hydrant?
I'm sorry, I don't have that stat before me, but we can get that for you. And while the pump can is rated at 1,500 gallons per minute with a 750-gallon tank, you are correct that generally, that is not our first deployment of water flow prior to being hooked up to a water supply. So the maximum that we'd be flowing is 1,000 gallons per minute out of a single device off the deck gun on the top. But usually, it's 150 GPM hose that we use for an initial attack, which does buy us a few minutes. And that is something that we train on diligently is water management. But so I'm sorry, I don't have the number of homes outside of hydrant range, but we can work on getting that for you.
Okay, and I'll keep my hand up, save more questions when it's my turn again.
Councilman Becker.
Yeah, so we have four of these trucks. I'm just wondering when we expect the next one to come up that we would need to replace after this one? And I understand we have the smaller one that's going to be coming up shortly.
So the next one would be slated for replacement in 2033. So if you're looking at about a three-year delivery time, we won't know until we get closer. Something we'll be watching, but that'd be for approaching requests for purchase in about 2030.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Reynolds.
Yeah, if I recall correctly from the agenda materials, the original offer that we were working on was for a fully custom as opposed to semi-custom truck. What have we given up by going from fully custom to semi-custom? What feature have we lost or features?
The primary features that we've lost is going from a 101-inch wide cab down to a 98... Or down to, yeah, 98-inch cab, which means it's a little bit narrower inside for the folks that are sitting in there. The cabinets that were on the outside for storing tools aren't going to be quite as deep. And then the ability to store the ladders inside a compartment inside of the engines, so they'll be on a ladder rack. But again, currently, the city's most recent purchase was the enforcer. So while we're not able to gain some of those advantages of storing the ladders inside and the cabinets aren't... Or the compartments aren't as deep, we are getting them about two years earlier, which we consider to be a significant advantage.
Thank you.
All right, council, any other questions?
We still have one more, if I may.
Go for it.
I see from the press that there's a lot of litigation associated with antitrust and other issues against the fire engine manufacturers. Can somebody give us an update on where that stands? And does the city have any involvement in that?
I can speak to that, Councilmember Reynolds. We are tracking it. I'm not prepared to give you a briefing tonight, and I prefer not to discuss legal matters in open council meetings as it stands anyway. But we are not party to any of that.
Okay, though we'll just, hope it's resolved in time for the next engine, we get a better price, but we'll see.
Yeah, the discussion, you know, importantly rests partly with the federal government, and I think that's right. We are not the only city, county, state, federal, tribal entity struggling to replace our fire equipment, and it's frustrating, and we are backed into a corner, and we don't have many options. But I do want to commend the staff team for getting this one resolved. It's, as you know, been a multi-year effort, and this equipment needs to be replaced, so we're on our way. But keeping an eye on the broader climate to make equipment replacement like this more fair and easy going forward.
Thank you.
Okay, not sensing there's any other questions, Council. There's two motions before us tonight. The first is a motion to suspend City Council rules of procedure, section six dot two, requiring a second reading of the ordinance. Anyone like to move that?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. Not seeing any discussion, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Councilmember Androll.
Aye.
Mayor Nice.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that waived, Council, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty-four, authorizing the purchase of one Pierce Enforcer pumper and authorizing a joint purchase agreement between the city, Eastside Fire and Rescue, and Hughes Fire Equipment, Inc., and a master tax-exempt installment purchase agreement with Municipal Asset Management, Inc., to finance the city's apparatus substantially in the form of the drafts attached to exhibit A and B to ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty-four?
Yes, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Androll, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. Again, not seeing any discussions. Say to clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Androll.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Mayor Nice.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
And Councilmember Weiger.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, motion passes. Again, thank you very much to the, for the finance team for all of the hard work on that. It was not your run-of-the-mill equipment purchase. Our next item of regular business is AV sixty-eight seventeen, adoption of the twenty-twenty-six legislative priorities. And welcome Senior Management Analyst Robbie Cunningham Adams.
Good evening, Council. It's that time of year again where you get to hear from me about the state legislative session. Give Amelia a chance, get the slide deck going. Well, great. Again, Robbie Cunningham Adams, Senior Analyst in C. Manners Office. Next slide, please. The twenty-twenty-six state legislative session is coming up soon, and so we are here tonight to adopt our legislative priorities. First, a little logistics to kind of expect in this year's session. The twenty-sixth session is a short session, which means it's sixty days versus the long, one hundred and five-day session we did last year. Short sessions, really all they mean is that there is not the adoption of the biannual budget. Because of that, they have a compressed timeline, so sixty days means it's faster paced. There's quick, there's less amount of time between kind of cutoff deadlines of committees in both houses. Typically, you know, there's a, because of there's less time, and it's also an election year for most of the legislature, there's a faster pace, a focus on a small number of bills. They do do a mid-budget adjustment, similar to what we do, but there typically is not as many bills run typically. While the exact dates of the session are not yet finalized, we do anticipate the session lasting from January twelfth to March twelfth of next year. Next slide, please. So Council, when we come to you every year with a legislative priorities document, you know, the purpose of this document is for council to approve legislative priorities to allow the city and staff and others on council to engage on issues with legislators directly, quickly, and effectively. You know, it is with the fast pace of the legislative session, especially in a short session, there's amendments, there's new bills coming up, there's committee hearings. It's not really, what I don't want to have to do is have to come to you guys every meeting to get an opinion on a specific bill. And so what's helpful is to have this document that provides really high-level goals of what are our values? What are we hoping for? What issues are important to us? And if we can kind of agree on that high-level stuff, you know, staff, and we can use that to engage in the nitty-gritty details day-to-day during the session, in engagement of specific language of legislation. Next slide, please. And so including your packet, exhibit one is the kind of draft state legislative priorities that we're going to review tonight. Just kind of, there is six kind of high-level categories that I'll go one by one in here, so go ahead and go to the next slide. The first one, and one of our bigger priorities this year, is your support for the safe use of e-bikes and e-motocycles and e-dirt bikes. You know, this is an issue we've been discussing with you a lot on the local end. As we've discussed, we need some help from Olympia on this as well. And so our kind of primary priority for the twenty-sixth session is to have the state adopt a definition and a classification for what exactly e-motocycles and e-dirt bikes are in state code. Now, what's happening now is we, as a city, adopted a definition of e-motorcycle, Issaquah adopted one. You know, there's an increasing hodgepodge of different language used, and having that uniform definition is going to be helpful to establish kind of one shared policy in the state. It's going to give us a little backup in our enforcement capabilities with it. And the good news is, city staff, we've already been engaging with AWC. We're in discussion of key stakeholders and the bike community and public safety community. There's legislators already interested in sponsoring and getting this legislation passed this year. So it's really strong momentum, and that is, that is thanks to our leadership as a city. You know, we brought this up with AWC, we brought this up with our neighbors, we're bringing this up with our legislators. So a lot of credit to Amelia especially for kind of getting this going. And normally, the rule of thumb is it takes three sessions to pass a bill, and I do think there's some reason for optimism, we can get something done on the first go of the session, but more to come on that. In addition to the e-motorcycle definition, we are also supportive of expanded state regulations and guidance on how do we balance safety and responsible use of e-bikes and new technologies like that while also promoting it as a sustainable transportation option. I'm not sure at exactly this point how much appetite there is for something beyond the definition of the e-motorcycle. I think that's going to be a really good first step that kind of builds momentum into future sessions. But we'll be engaging and see if there's opportunity for additional measures to be done, and this kind of bullet point in our priorities will allow us to do that. Next slide, please. Public safety, you know, we're interested in state funding for, and kind of partnership from the state for us to help adopt some needed public safety technologies such as body worn cameras, ALPR readers, evidence processing software systems. I know police technology is going to be kind of a theme in the coming months and years here at the city, and it would really be great to get some port from the state on that. We're still, you know, advocating for support of how we can respond to the Washington Supreme Court ruling on indigent defense and public defenders. And, you know, we're kind of joining with AWC, and the legislature passed a public safety kind of funding mechanism under HB twelve fifteen that some cities are considering using, or I know the county has already adopted this. AWC has flagged that for smaller communities, potentially like us, there might be some challenges in making sure that's accessible. And so that's not uncommon in Olympia for them to pass something, and the next year, they have to come back and do a few fixes on it, so we're monitoring that. Next slide, please. Once again, you know, we are prioritizing getting any support we can from the state to support the great work that Youth and Family Services does with substance use, you know, education and prevention, school and community-based mental health support, you know, co-response with Eastside Fire and their fire department. So we are continuing to support those priorities. Next slide, please. Affordable housing, I know housing and land use is often one of the bigger things we get to engage with of Olympia. And I suspect that will continue. I am a little bit hopeful that the volume of bills will decrease a little bit this session. But, you know, I know, especially in response to the GMA ruling and, you know, what our partners at Arch are asking for, like, we're going to need continually going to need new tools and kind of incentives and things in our tool belt to meet the needs for affordable housing production and implementing House Bill twelve twenty. To do that, as we know, you know, to expand housing opportunity, we're going to need continued investment and support for infrastructure to support that housing. You know, we're continuing to support Arch, and, you know, kind of trying to find that balance between what should be the responsibility of local partnerships like Arch versus kind of unilateral state mandates. And then finally, we're making some progress on this one of Olympia of, we're already, we have, we need to implement the stuff they've already asked us to do in housing, and if they're going to add new things for them to give long leadways, so our planning department doesn't get more overwhelmed by the amount of work that the Olympia has us doing. Next slide, please. Council, you may remember in last council meeting's packet, we, you gave authorization for Mayor Nice to sign on to a letter from AWC related to wastewater management. I wanted to add this to our priorities as well. I think, you know, in joining the AWC and just in general, like, asking the state, you know, our, we need to invest a lot in our water infrastructure already. You know, there's already a lot of pressure on affordability and our utility rates, and we need to focus on rebuilding and maintaining what we have before the state can ask us to put more pressure on our system that will be further pressure on rate increases. So I know city leadership was recently at a King County Utility Rate Conference, and this was a big focus of that discussion. It's going to be a big topic in Olympia this year. So we added that to the priorities document. Next slide. Preserving and protecting the environment, you know, we have a really great council-adopted climate action plan. We are always looking for ways the state can help us implement that, be it with funding or policy action. Next slide, please. Thanks to Councilmember Reynolds, I did realize there was an error made in the agenda bill in the text of this section. The text that's in exhibit one is, I copied it from the original version we sent to you all last year. We did point out that we did modify that text during the meeting, and so it's inconsistent with the final text from the twenty-twenty-five legislative priorities. And I do think that newer text is better, and so I do recommend a motion to return to the final language used from last year. So that's in italics there. I think we have a motion prepared for that. It's a more comprehensive, you know, the one in your packet's a little narrowly focused on solar power, and we're obviously interested in all sorts of clean energy, wherever that may come from. Next slide, almost done here. Including your packet, and just for reference, some of our partners, AWC and Arch, their legislative priorities. Happy to talk as best as I can about those if there's questions, but just want to include those for reference. Next slide. You know, we have just kind of a basic word version in your packet now. I'm, we're interested in questions, and if there's motions to change text, we can do that here. But whatever text is approved, I'm going to, after it's approved by you all, I'll put it in a little glossier, nicer format, and that's what will be shared with our community and shared with our legislators, AWC, put on the website, et cetera. Next slide, I think it's just a recommended motion. That's all I have. Happy to take questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, any questions? Okay, no questions. I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the city of Mercer Island twenty-twenty-six state legislative priorities substantially in the form attached to exhibit one to AV sixty-eight one seven.
So moved. Second.
Okay, moved by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, seconded by Councilmember Weinberg. Councilmember Reynolds, you want me to, you want to make that amendment to the motion?
Yes. I move to amend the text to the preserving and protecting the environment section to the following. Quote, "The city supports legislative partnerships and funding opportunities that advance the implementation of the city's adopted climate action plan. This includes initiatives for clean energy, emissions reduction, electrification of public assets, and innovative practices that promote resilience and protect natural resources," close quote. And for avoidance of doubt, that's the language we used last year.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Mayor Nice. Any discussion? All right, City Clerk, please call the roll on the amendment to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Nice.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Councilmember Androll.
Aye.
I believe Councilmember Weiger had to step away. And Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, amendment to the motion passes. Any discussion on the amended motion? All right, not seeing any. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Weiger is absent. Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Mayor Nice.
Aye.
Councilmember Androll.
Aye.
And Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Robbie. Our next item of regular business is AV sixty-eight eighteen, Code Amendments, Chapter ten dot twenty-two, MICC impounding, ordinance number twenty-five C dash thirty-two. We welcome Management Analyst Amelia Jaden. Welcome.
Good evening, Council. Thank you, Mayor. Amelia Jaden, Management Analyst. And I will be walking you through tonight's presentation regarding updates to the city's impound code. I will give a brief background and overview of our current impound procedures before walking through what ordinance number twenty-five C dash three-two intends to do. To start, state law gives NYPD the authority to impound vehicles. Chapter ten dot two-two of the Mercer Island City Code provides the procedures and impoundment for recovery. Notably, this chapter was last amended in nineteen seventy-eight and requires updating to be consistent with state law and recent changes to the city code. As you may remember, in September, the city council adopted ordinance number twenty-five C dash two-four, establishing regulations for e-motocycles. This ordinance created a definition for electric motorcycles or e-motocycles and requires that these vehicles be subject to the same regulations as traditional motorcycles. This ordinance also established the ability for NYPD to impound an e-motorcycle. In twenty twenty-four, NYPD impounded approximately a hundred and fifty vehicles. There are many reasons a vehicle would be impounded, including criminal offenses like driving with license suspended or driving while other, under the influence, and also parking offenses like overstaying the seventy-two-hour on-street time limit. To impound a vehicle, an officer will contact dispatch and request that a tow company is called. The city uses a rotational tow list rather than an exclusive contract with a single vendor. In other words, when dispatch is notified of an impound, the next tow operator on the list is called to retrieve the vehicle. The officer then documents the impoundment, issues any citations, and gives the owner information for retrieval. Ordinance number twenty-five C dash three-two amends chapter ten dot two-two to make it consistent with state law and recent revisions to the city code, including the e-motorcycle regulations. This ordinance establishes an administrative fee that is used to recover the costs of staff time associated with an impound. In twenty twenty-six, the fee will be one hundred dollars, roughly the average cost for an hour of a police officer's time. The administrative fee will be established in the fee schedule and thus subject to annual review. Staff intend to adjust the administrative fee each year by the Consumer Price Index for Seattle, Tacoma, and Bellevue. If adopted, the ordinance will become effective January first of next year. Under the ordinance, impound procedures will only change slightly. An officer will request dispatch for a tow company to impound a vehicle. The owner will be notified, and the impound is documented. To retrieve the vehicle, an owner will need to pay the administrative fee. Using existing technology, the city will collect payment through an online portal. The owner will receive proof of payment or receipt for the administrative fee, which they will present to the tow company at the time of retrieval. Importantly, a vehicle owner will not be able to retrieve the vehicle without proof of payment for this administrative fee. In regards to e-motocycles, our partner towing companies have communicated that they will work with the city and the police department to impound e-motocycles. E-motocycles will be treated as any other vehicle under the ordinance. Police officers will use the same procedures, and the owners and operators will be subject to the same administrative fee. Because the person riding the e-motorcycle may not be, may not be the owner, meaning it's a child operating the vehicle while the parent is the owner, it will be the owner's responsibility to prove ownership to the tow company. And with that, I will turn it back to you for any questions.
Okay, Council, any questions? Councilmember Reynolds.
Yes, talk to me about how this happens logistically. Let's suppose that an e-motorcycle's been illegally operated. Either it doesn't have a state license, or the operator does not have a license or something similar, and they've stopped the driver of this, and they called for an impound. Does the police officer just have to stand there on the corner until the tow company comes, and then they load it onto a truck, or what would happen? I don't imagine you can actually tow a motorcycle.
Good evening, Council. Mike Seifer, the Operations Commander with the Police Department here. And we don't know with the e-motocycles yet because we haven't started doing that, but if we do things the same way we do with regular vehicles, there is a officer that usually stays on scene. Doesn't tend to take too long when the police request the tow as opposed to private tows, which sometime can take a while because they know there is an officer, you know, there to hand over control of the vehicle to the tow company. But it gives the officer time to do paperwork, finish whatever else needs to be done while on scene. But yes, an officer tends to stay on scene until the vehicle's picked up.
So there would never be a scenario where an officer
So, there would never be a scenario where an officer would take it back to the police station to keep there, or something like that? It goes directly from the incident to the tow company?
The only time we would take a vehicle back to the police department is if we're holding on to it for evidence, if it's, if it has some sort of evidential value for a crime that's being investigated.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Not seeing any. Council, is there a motion to schedule Ordinance Number 25C-32 for second reading and adoption?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum. Not seeing any discussion. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Councilmember Wyker, are you back? It does not look like it. Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
And Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Nice job. Our next item of regular business is AB 6816, the 2026 Annual Comprehensive Plan and Development Code Amendment Docket. We welcome CPD Director Jeff Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor, for the final time this evening here. Molly is going to join me here momentarily, I believe. There she is. No PowerPoint this evening. I will give you a short verbal report and then turn it back over to the mayor. This year, we received nine individual docket proposals for the 2026 docket. The Planning Commission held a meeting in October to review the proposals and to make their recommendations to the City Council. This year, the Planning Commission is not recommending any proposals be doctored for 2026, so there would be no new items added to the work program. I can tell you, staff wholeheartedly incurs and supports this Planning Commission recommendation. Molly did an excellent job in your agenda bill for this item, AB 6818, I believe, of giving you an overview of the current work program in CPD and specifically with the Planning Division. We are buried for various reasons. One of them Robbie hit on there a few moments ago with the, the GMA compliance effort that we're undertaking. The reality is, any of the nine items in this year's docket proposals most likely would not see a legislative review, by my math, probably until the year 2029. So, it would be definitely a few years out. The, the recommendations are included as Exhibit 2 in your agenda bill materials. And we do, we started doing this a few years ago, the Docket Tracker, it's called. That's included as Exhibit 3 in your agenda materials. Hopefully, you had a chance to look at that. That shows you, we have closed out a lot of things over the years since dating back to 2020. But there are still some matters that we need to get to after our GMA compliance efforts wrap up hopefully next fall. And to, before I turn it back over to the mayor, we do have a motion that was part of the agenda bill. I believe Andrea is going to maybe pop it up here on the screen. Here we go. Even though the recommendation is to not docket anything, just to bring official closure to the docket for this year, there is a motion that would have the council accept the Planning Commission's recommendation to docket no comprehensive plan or development code amendment proposals for 2026, and that would bring official closure to it. So, that, Mayor, we're happy to answer any questions you may have, and leave this motion up or take it down and pop it back up if necessary.
Okay. Councilmember Reynolds.
Yes, Mr. Thomas, I'm just a, a little concerned by your 2029 estimate. Certainly, I'm not saying it should be faster. I understand everything that's been dumped on you, but if, it certainly limits our ability to be very nimble as a city to respond to new developments. If we wanted to shrink the wait time, what's the constraining factor now? Is it staff resources? Is it Planning Commission resources? If the Planning Commission met twice a month rather than once a month, could we be faster? What would we have to do?
Not necessarily. We, so for 20, we're going to lose a year essentially in 2026 because of the GMA compliance efforts. We have a state mandated update to our Shoreline Master Program and Shoreline Regulations that will need to start almost in 2027 to be able to get that done in a timely fashion. We have additional docket items from previous years that need to get locked up. So, it's really a combination of things. Councilmember Reynolds, there's no, there's no magic bullet to, to eliminate the work that's in front of us. The City Council and the Planning Commission do meet a limited number of times a year. Adding more Planning Commission meetings, it, it moves a bottleneck from one place to another. Adding more staff, it's the same thing. It moves it to the Planning Commission. The, the reality is, is that we have a good strategy for the next couple of years out in how to go about the work that's in front of us. And I, I would urge the council to stay the course with our current resources, our, our current meeting efforts, and focus on, you know, immediately what's in front of us, which is the GMA compliance. And then we'll go about the business that we were going to do in 2026 as soon as that wraps up. And it's a, it's a marathon. It's not a sprint that we're doing here with this work.
Jeff, may I?
Oh, go ahead.
May I also just chime in? This discussion is limited right now to the body of work in front of basically the Planning Department. I'll just, friendly reminder that we have other plans and other work happening in other departments. And it's not just a council-staff horsepower issue, but there's also an upper limit, in my opinion, on how much we can thrust in front of the community and ask for meaningful engagement. And so, keep an eye on that meter as well. We get kind of death by meetings, death by plan, and then we have no engagement. So, looking ahead, we have some really important topics to engage with the community on, including what we're going to do about our public facilities. So, don't forget the rest of that body of work. Speeding up in one area may have an impact on another.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Nope. All right. Council, is there a motion to accept and adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation to docket no comprehensive plan or development code amendment proposal received for 2026?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Weinberg, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. Not sensing any discussions. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Andrell.
Aye.
Mayor Neese.
Aye.
Councilmember Weinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Becker.
Aye.
On the for the record, Councilmember Wyker is back. And call Councilmember Wyker's vote.
Aye. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum.
Aye.
And Councilmember Reynolds.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Motion passes, which brings us to other business in the planning schedule. We welcome City Manager Jesse Bond.
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on my earlier comment, Council, I will be in touch with you by the end of the week to let you know what I anticipate the December calendar will look like for the council. For sure, meeting on December 2nd. As of right now, I do not think we'll need that second meeting, but I'll know for sure by the end of the month, by the end of the week. Excuse me.
Okay. That takes us to Councilmember Abstances. Any upcoming Councilmember Abstances? Nope. All right. Councilmember Reports. Deputy Mayor Rosenbaum, anything to report?
I'll just note that there's a special addition of the farmer's market on Sunday as well, I think is a holiday market. Hopefully, it won't rain.
Bring your scarf, farmer's market. I have nothing to report. Councilmember Wyker?
Yeah, I attended the King County Utilities Summit last Friday with Jesse and Jason, and we learned that utilities everywhere have more need than resources, and really appreciate staff keeping track of that for our residents and working with the county and jurisdictions and PSC to try to make sure we have reliability all around as well as cost effectiveness. It's, it's a heavy lift, and a lot of intergovernmental coordination's been required beyond electeds trying to keep up. Staff is doing yeoman's work on this one.
Okay. Councilmember Weinberg.
Yeah, so the Eastside Transportation Partnership met last Friday. Michelle Hyun from Washtot Strategic Communications, the manager of their strategic communications, gave a detailed presentation on the Revive I-5 Project, the Ship Canal Bridge of I-5, specifically which is northeast, the northeast corner of Lake Union, carries over 240,000 vehicles a day and is now 60 years old, and hasn't had major restoration work in 40 years. So, for the next two years, they're going to be modernizing the drains and piping and resurfacing the deck two lanes at a time. And they're going to be taking a two-month break for the World Cup. We also discussed the legislative agenda for the ETP. There's particular discussion about the e-mobility language of the agenda and the requested modifications specific to e-motocycles and e-dirt bike definitions. And there were some tough questions that were asked from council members from Bothell and Issaquah, which risked sidelining the proposed changes. Our very own Amelia Chaden was there and saved the day. She gave very professional, succinct, and fact-based responses to each question and described both the problem and the reasons behind the incremental approach towards filling this gap between the deficiencies of e-bikes and motorcycles. And in the end, all the ETP members voted unanimously in support of these proposed language. So, thank you again to Amelia for that. My next open monthly lunch will be at 12:00 PM on Saturday, December 20th, at the Riviera Maya Restaurant. The address, 8451 Southeast 68th Street. As always, everyone is welcome. It's an open agenda, news, sports, weather, humor, anything about city business. All I ask is that anyone show their respects to the chef by ordering some food and/or beverage, and let me know if you're coming, so I can reserve a large enough table.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah, we had a lot of activity in the Parks Commission recently, most recently with a joint meeting with the Parks Commission, the Open Space Conservancy Trust to start the discussion of what the rules should be on e-bikes in parks and open spaces. We're going to be coming back to the next meeting with some possible draft revisions to the code provided by staff for the Parks Commission and the LCST to consider. It's been an interesting meeting so far. I've got a lot of passionate community input and some community testimony in the meetings as well. This is going to create some not easy decisions for them or for us when it comes to the council. Secondly, there was another meeting, which was just the Parks Board to talk about some preliminary design ideas for Dean's Children's Park, aka Dragon Park. There were some design ideas presented to the Parks Board that were, no other word for it other than fabulous. If, if we could build something like what was designed, it would be incredible. Unfortunately, the design ideas were well beyond the budget of what we had available from the Parks Levy. So, some tough discussions, no doubt, remain ahead in, which might involve finding ways to raise money from the public, you know, in charitable donations or otherwise, but or else alternatively finding a way to cut back the cost of the project in some material ways.
Okay. Councilmember Andrell.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Becker.
I do have some brief remarks today. I was appointed to the seat in June on an interim basis, and Julie Shay will be sworn, sworn in before the next meeting. So, this is my last meeting of the year before I rejoin in January. I just wanted to take this chance to thank all of you for the opportunity over the last six months. I gave it my best. I hope my contributions were a benefit to the city, and I wish Julie the best of luck.